Good morning.
Good morning.
May 2nd meeting of the Cumberland County Commissioners now come to order. First order business, invocation and pleasurable allegiance. I'd like at this time to call on Commissioner Kenneth Edge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's an honor and a pleasure this morning to introduce to you someone that I have not known very long but have grown very fond of, and it's a pleasure to have him with us this morning to do our invocation. His name is one that you will all recognize but probably not the one that you're thinking of. His name is Tom Burleson.
A little shorter, isn't he?
He's not seven feet four, but he is, uh, he is full of energy and I'd like to tell you a little about him. Tom Burleson is the interim pastor at my church, Highland Presbyterian Church, and this is his fifth interim position in the eighth Presbyterian church in which he has served. He was born in North Carolina. He did not actually live here for 10 years until he was 10 years old. His undergraduate degree is from Marshall, the University, and I wore this in honor of him today.
The University?
The University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. He had a degree in education. Some of us can share that honor. He also earned a Master's of Education and a Master of Divinity degree from Princeton Seminary. He received his doctorate of ministry from Union Presbyterian Seminary in Richmond, Virginia. These days, although he works in fable, Dr. Burleson lives in the mountains, in Sparta, North Carolina. That's about as far northwest as you can get. He lives with his wife, Jo, and their daughter, Sarah, who will be attending the North Carolina School of the Arts in the fall, and I believe that's in Winston-Salem. His son, Na- Valen, is finishing his first year at Appalachian this week. We welcome him to Cumberland County and to our Commissioners' meeting, so if you would stand with me as we honor God and country. Mr. Burleson, if you would just come forward, please.
I invite you to join with me in prayer. Gracious Lord, we thank you for this morning, for another day, a day full of opportunities and challenges, a day that allows us to find the best in ourselves and to seek the best for those around us. For these men and women elected by their fellow citizens to lead and to seek the common good, give them this day a clear and sharp mind, open their hearts with compassion, give them vision to see past self-interest, and to strive to make this a community for all. Open their ears so that they may hear all voices, especially the voice of wisdom. As a follower of Jesus, it is in Christ's name I make this prayer. Amen.
Join me in the praise, please.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Oh, God, no, I can't get up. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Item number one is approval of the agenda, and the only thing I would ask, Mr. Chairman, is that we delay item two for just a few moments. We're trying to get his presentation loaded on the computer, and he's fine with that. He does not have any time constraints.
Okay, all right. With that exception, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, proceed to item three, consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Board, do I hear any changes to the consent agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item 3B.
Item 3B, any other... Okay, let's go ahead and approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay, move to second in discussion. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Item 3B, Mr. Keith.
Uh, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. That's approval of submission of the 2016 Community Development Annual Action Plan. I was wondering if I could ask Sylvia to come up and have a couple of questions, because we are right in the middle of a lot of things happening in community development and our relationship with the city and homelessness and that sort of thing.
Yes, sir.
I noticed on the budget that a number of the mission, the mission statement and the duties and responsibilities of the continuum of care are really data collection and getting a, the pulse of the community as far as homelessness going. Is that really been happening or that they're providing those reports? Because I haven't seen those reports, and we're in the middle of trying to, right now, hire somebody to, it sounds like, get some of those same reports. Is there access to those reports that they have now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Currently, we do have access to HMIS. In our office, we do have a staff person that is serving as the local administrator in order to pull those reports. She has been training with all of the agencies for the past several months in order to get them up and running to ensure that their data is correct, so that when we begin to pull those reports, and particularly when the person is hired, that she will be trained to know exactly what reports to pull and what to look at to ensure the data is clean. So, we do have the capability at this present time, and we do have a staff person that has the capability of pulling the reports. The COC has not been able to pull those reports because it has to be an individual that is, one, that has the license, and, two, an individual or an agency that actually have access to all of the data for all of the agencies. And currently, we are the only one in this area that has that access.
And we still really don't have access yet because we're in the middle of training. Is that correct?
In our department, we do have access.
Okay. It just struck me a little bit as I was going through that it seems like there's going to be some duplication of fact gathering between the COC and this new individual that we may be having, and it may be missing something, or there may be an air pocket that I don't understand. Can you tell me a little bit about where the COC and their responsibilities and duties are going to be moving forward?
The idea of moving forward is that when the data, data and evaluation analyst is hired, they are able to pull the reports to help the COC make a better assessment of the programs that are being administered. The, it is, we hope that the COC will be able to take that information and then begin to be more proactive in actually evaluating all of the agencies that are receiving federal and state funding that are going toward homelessness in order to ensure that the programs are operating effectively.
Okay. If I, if I move on from then a little bit, I noticed that, obviously, we get a lot of federal funds that come in there, and there's, really, surprisingly, there's not much local funds that are required for the match. But the, this, and I need information on this, but it looks like the COC specifically received about $800,000 last year to work with homelessness. Now, I know a very small part of that was a local match, well, about $100,000, it looks like. But is that $800,000 just for, if you will, the county community development, or does that also include community development actions that are happening in the city at the same time? Is the COC working with the city also?
Um, yes, there's a representative that sits on the COC executive, the COC Board, excuse me, that serves as a liaison also. Now, the 800 semi-thousand that has come into Cumberland County consist of around 300 that the county administers for the COC programs, and the remainder of those funds actually are going directly to the other grantee agencies that operate within Cumberland County, which serve individuals that are located within the city limits also.
Sure, we actually are working with, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we actually are working with the city on this part of it.
Yes, sir. On the COC, there is a representative that sits on the COC that is a city staff person.
Okay, I'm still confused, but I've got my answers. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Counsel.
I too watched that meeting and was very concerned with some of the questions that arose, but I, I struggled to remember exactly how many times you publish the schedule and you come to us every year. And I, I know that the same thing has to be done with all agencies, and I know you come to us about three times, I think. Me?
At least two.
At least, at least two.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, when will you start working on next year's plan?
We are looking at this coming year to start in the period between August and September because we want to start doing some, some assess, make some assessments and review of some of the communities that are in the urban towns to, just to get a, more of an idea of what their needs are, so that in December, we are hoping to be able to have a very, very general plan that we can present to management as a possibility of different activities that can take place, that is within the scope of our five-year consolidated plan.
Uh-huh. And Commissioner Keith asked some questions that cleared some things for me, too. Are you ready for a vote?
Yeah, please. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Evans has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and help me to understand when you say a different activities plan that you were talking about just a second ago. What specific activities are you talking about so people will understand, so everyone will clearly understand what you're talking about, including myself?
Yes, sir. The activities that we are able to utilize our CDBG and home dollars for are specifically for housing rehabilitation, which is for homeowners, and for investors. We are able to also use our fund for public service activities, which include some, with some agencies that provide medication assistance and dental assistance to low-income residents. In addition to homelessness, we are able to use our public service funds in order to help some of the agencies and, including the programs that we administer in community development, to support the homeless effort. We have funds that set aside for, that we are using for the CHODOs and for development for affordable housing. And in addition to that, we also have funds that we can use that's within the scope of our consolidated plan, public facility and, and infrastructure. We are focusing on one particular area that has come up over the years that are in need of some infrastructure assistance, so we're going to see what we could possibly do to help in that aid, hopefully, this year.
You know, and thank you, and I appreciate what you're doing and, and what we as a board and Commissioner, past Chairman Edge, and his hopes in working to improve homelessness and all of this, everything that we're doing, I appreciate that. But I just, and I know there's some things that have to go into play. We have to do this, we have to do that, we have to do this, we have to do that. But it, I just wish it was a way that we could move things a little faster as far as getting everything under one umbrella and where everybody would know where to go to get the services that are needed offered, and this may be totally off of what, what we're talking about, but this is a concern of mine and also a concern of others, that it seems like the process is just going a little bit slow for us.
Yes, sir. If I could answer that question, please. I do understand that the process has been very, very slow. I do think there's a little bit of momentum. I've actually had some discussion with the interim city manager about several issues, one of those being the homelessness initiative and about that being a joint initiative. I do believe that there's going to be some discussion this evening in the city council work session regarding homelessness and specifically how the COC may fit into that picture with the county moving forward. So, we may know a little bit more about where the city council's interest is and about a path forward. So, I do want you to know that it is a top priority for management with community development, and we have had some conversation with city management about moving this effort forward.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Senator. Go ahead. Go ahead, I'll call for a motion this time.
I move for the approval of this item.
Mr. Second?
Second.
Okay, move to second in discussion. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman? I think we might be able to go back to item number two, please. I think we have that presentation loaded, if that's okay with you.
Okay, as we're getting ready for that, I'll call on Vice Chairman Adams for a quick recognition.
I'd just like to recognize, we have our, one of our trustees from the library, Ms. Page is here, we just want to make sure we welcome her, as I'm the liaison to the library.
Well, I'd like to recognize the people that are helping us do all the things we don't have time to do. Okay, this time we'll proceed then to item two, the presentation.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rick Lanier is a co-founder and vice chairman of the U.S. Motto Action Committee, and he's going to give us a presentation today regarding displaying "In God We Trust" in our governmental buildings. Mr. Lanier, welcome.
Honorable Chairman, Commissioners, it's my pleasure to come before you this morning. This is an invitation to join the growing list of cities and counties that are voting yes to proudly and prominently display our national motto, "In God We Trust," in and on their governmental buildings. My name is Rick Lanier, and I'm co-founder and vice chairman of the U.S. Motto Action Committee. I served as county commissioner of Davidson County in Lexington, North Carolina, from 1998 to 2002. In 2002, I led my Board of Commissioners to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" on the exterior of our governmental center. Soon after that, several other surrounding cities and counties joined us in doing the same. We formed the U.S. Motto Action Committee for the sole purpose to promote patriotism by encouraging elected officials like yourself to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" in and on their governmental buildings. Displaying the motto gives ceremonial honor to public occasions and expresses confidence in our society. These words have been used on our U.S. currency since 1864. This inspiring slogan is engraved above the entrance of the U.S. Senate Chamber as well as the Speaker's Seat, above the Speaker's Seat in the U.S. House of Representatives. On July 30th, 1956, during Dwight D. Eisenhower's administration, the U.S. Congress adopted "In God We Trust" as the official national motto of the United States of America. Thus, displaying our motto is a legal right protected by our First Amendment. On November the 1st, 2001, the U.S. House of Representatives voted overwhelmingly, 396 to 9, to reaffirm "In God We Trust" as our nation's motto. Congressman Randy Forbes of Virginia sponsored the resolution in part because some have mistakenly stated that e pluribus unum is our national motto. Most importantly, the resolution specifically encourages placement of the motto in and on all governmental buildings, from courthouses to school classrooms. A recent survey shows that 87% of all Americans still support the display of our national motto, and rightly so. This is our nation's identity. My last name's Lanier, Chairman, your last name's Faircloth. I'm pretty proud of that. I'm proud of our identity as a country, and we need to not be ashamed of it, we need to proudly and prominently display it as often as possible. In times of both war and peace, these words have been a profound source of strength and guidance to many generations of Americans. And I might point out a reminder in 2000, 2000, 9/11/2001, what was one of the first things happened? Dr. Billy Graham had prayer on the Capitol steps in Washington, DC. It's very important that we remind it, and he said that day, he referred to our trust in God. As a grassroots patriotic movement, the U.S. Motto Action Committee stands on solid legal ground. Since Davidson County paved the way, not one legal challenge has been raised against any city or county that has voted yes. And, and I might add that 42 North Carolina counties and 31 town or city halls have voted yes to display this motto. Commissioner Edge, Dr. Burleson that spoke earlier in Sparta, from Sparta, North Carolina, you probably received in your package that I emailed each one of you, a letter of recommendation from Allegheny County of an unsolicited recommendation by them. We have received certificates of appreciation from counties like Sherry County for our efforts, and we've also been endorsed by the Billy Graham Evangelistic Association by Dr. Franklin Graham from Boone, North Carolina. This effort is totally legal. There's nothing to challenge. 100%, and, and make note of this, 100% of the cost of this comes from private donations, in most cases, from your local citizens right here in the county. How often, might I add, do you get things offered to you free of charge? And as being a former county commissioner, we always like those. Zero cost to the county. All across the state, elected officials are quickly embracing an opportunity to display our great motto, "In God We Trust." Displaying the motto will serve as a perpetual reminder of our godly heritage, and I think now is probably the most appropriate time ever in the history of our country to do this. Elected officials like you are showing a commitment to the values that this country was founded upon. Thank you in advance for your vote, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that any of you may have at this time.
Any questions for former Commissioner Lanier? I don't have any questions at this time, but I, I want to thank you for coming down and making this presentation. I wanted you to present to the entire board first, and we will refer it to our Facilities Committee, because anything that concerns buildings will go to them before we do anything.
Yes, sir.
But I do want to thank you for coming, and if you will, just come down and shake everybody's hands as a former commissioner.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
(Inaudible)
Yes, sir. Under item of business, item number four, consideration of a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for approval of an installment financing agreement and approval to schedule a public hearing on the proposed capital improvement plan financing for May 16th, 2016. And I'd ask our Finance Director, Vicki Evans, to come forward and give a brief overview of this item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
This morning, I'm requesting your approval of the resolution authorizing the filing of an application to the Local Government Commission of an installment financing agreement authorized by General Statute 160A-20, and for authorization to call a public hearing on the proposed financing at the May 16th Board of Commissioners' meeting. The resolution was included in your, in today's agenda packet, and the most recent update regarding the financing of the three-year capital improvement plan was provided during the March 3rd work session of the Board of Commissioners. The purpose of the resolution is to make the findings of fact, which include: The installment purchase is preferable to issuing bonds; the amount proposed is not excessive for the stated purpose; the county's debt management procedures and policies are good and in strict compliance with the law; a tax increase is not necessary; and the county is not in default on any existing debt. In addition, a notice of public hearing on the proposed installment financing contract is included. In order to proceed with the installment financing of the three-year capital improvement plan, your approval is required. Are there any questions?
Any question for Finance Office this time?
I have one question, Mr. Faircloth, if I may.
Okay.
Vicki does. Does this have to go before the Local Government Commission at all?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Ms. Keith?
Thank you. This seems like a very general resolution that, I guess, once we approve this, then it doesn't have to come back before the Board? Is that right? We have put in that we can encumber pretty much a lot of our, our properties for...
The, for the, the cost of the improvements.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Um, how do we decide which ones, I mean, does it have to come before the Board again, or can that be a staff decision?
Well, it, it did. During the fiscal year 16 budget process, the capital improvement plan was brought before you, and the, the first three years of the capital improvement plan that included roofs, parking lots, and building exteriors, that encompasses in, of multiple buildings throughout the county.
But do we encumber those buildings with the bond at all?
I'm not sure.
As far as collateral purposes?
Yes.
I think, um, not all the properties, I, I guess it would, those items would be capitalized, and I'm not sure that the collateral issue has been specifically addressed.
And the reason I'm asking is because there's a number of things that... And the reason I'm asking is, 'cause there's a number of things that we're already in, we already have bonds or, or loans, if you will, with, that already have some of these, these buildings incorporated in it. Um, I'm just...